Got one.
I said, everyone's been in terms of it's in my life. And was a politician. That was his main goal.
Well, sometimes, you know, you want to be a politician, you gotta. Be a little stern first.
Yeah.
Get some of that.
I wasn't sure how we do.
At least the overly airy thing.
If we look at like.
Another guy, there's about five.
Yeah.
All over the mountain.
Parcels highly.
Yeah. No. Yes. Really good.
Yeah. It was raining already good since I, since I got here, yeah.
Yeah. Everybody said it's the six o'clock. Right? Okay. Good evening, it is 6:00 PM, this is the regular business meeting of the Smithfield Township Board of Supervisors. Please join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance.
The United States. Which is saying is. Indemnisable with whatever the justice for all.
Thank you all, members present include myself, Chairman Jacob Pride, Vice Chair Robert Lovenheim, Township Manager Julia Heilica, Engineer John Treston, Solicitor Ron Karasak. We are also joined by Pete Bagley here in person. No one on Zoom thus far. And we may yet be joined by Supervisor Barrett. First order of business is the consideration for the minutes of the January third reorganizational meeting and the business meeting following that meeting, as well as the January 11th regular business meeting where we had our last public hearing.
I'm going to approve those meetings. Minutes.
Motion by Mr. Lovenheim, I will second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We do not have any public hearings this evening, nor do we have any plans to act on. Ron, do you wish to note anything this evening?
Just one or two items as I think I mentioned at the last meeting, and if I didn't, I stand corrected in the sense that the action involving the auditors is now officially over, the press is paid to settle, discontinue, and end the case as required by Judge Bullock has been filed. And that case is over. And at this point, I'm working on the matters involving this bygone Slater later situation, Black Buffalo, whatever, I've got all kinds of agreements here to look at, and we need to discuss just a bit the declaration of taking issues that we will see later on in new business D. And other than that, pretty about it, it's been involved with respect to getting those agreements together. In fact, I just finished the agreement on Eagle Valley self-storage, I finished that agreement, I finished the Stormwater Agreement on Eagle Valley self-storage. And I sent those to Attorney Kramer, I think I might have sent copies here to the office so you have them for your file, there's one more agreement I told that has to be filed, which is an easement agreement with respect to either Sambo Creek or some other waterway in that area, and I told Kramer that, you know, I'm.
Sambo.
I need to meet some bounds and I need a map or, you know, a plan so that we can pack those as exhibits. And other than that, that's about it.
Perfect, thank you. John, do you wish to note anything?
The only thing I would note is under your consent agenda, I see that you have approved payment at number one, which we're comfortable with as your engineer, we did write a letter dated today, as a matter of fact, discussing our concerns about their payment request number two. We, there's a punch list item without standing, we think that should be addressed. And I don't know, I guess now is as good a time as any, I don't know. The board understands that the path was at the, at the site of the dock itself, the path is offset from the dock by about eight feet and there's a between the vitamis path and the dock, there is modified.
Sure.
I don't know how that happened, we didn't give them that directive, I don't know if they received the directive from anyone else. It's not where it's supposed to be. I think it still functions okay where it is. So if you don't have a problem with it, I don't have a problem with it, the only thing I would say is that ADA accessible surfaces are supposed to be hard surface and I'm not sure that that modified meets that, but.
I think that's what we're aiming for, so if we can take some sort of corrective action upon further inspection or something. Because I think that he's essentially, you know, the leader in that company is essentially saying, well, it was sort of free, so it's okay, right? Like, I didn't understand.
I didn't understand that either.
Email was. I don't recall that because we paid him.
Yeah. So we can add to the punch list that he's got to pay that little section, I think that would be the appropriate thing to do. Unless anybody has a problem in that, I don't.
Well, what is it now, just cinders or something?
Yeah, it's two, two A modified.
I spoke to Pioneer, I know they were concerned and we're going to rectify the slope because it wasn't quite the ADA accessible slope, so I think it has to make it longer or something, I don't, I'm not sure what.
I looked at it pretty carefully and it is, it is accessible on the front half, so I figured that it meets that that standard, but the standard it doesn't meet is if that modified stone starts to get rutted because it isn't a hard surface, then it's going to be difficult for ADA people to.
What, what is it though? Because there are some surfaces that settle to become hard after a while, you know, it's made of.
It's, it's called modified two A stones, just gravel. Now, it'll, it'll be harder and it's fairly level, so it shouldn't erode. But I think it should have paved.
I think if the goal is for ADA accessibility, I don't know, you know, why would we go out there, talk about this great park that's going to be ADA accessible and then not have it be completely compliant?
But there's, there's another possibility, which is to do a small paved area in the middle of it, so it doesn't look so massive. Starts paving that will just have a portion of it going up, it's like a paved path in the middle, the cinders on the side.
Well, whatever you prefer.
Is it not going to deter yourself?
Okay, I mean, if that's what you think, we'll do, we can, let me take a look at it, I'll send you a sketch, I'll email you.
I'm just concerned that it meets the standard and other, I don't.
Well, I agree with the standards and it, it looked something like what was wanted to do with the first one. Right now, it looks like this massive pile of cinders leading up to, I don't know, some sort of a platform that I wouldn't give a caution on, but I don't know if I fish in there. Wow, it's just, it's, this has been too long going on with too many modifications, it's like, we get to the point where it's time to leave it alone and go on. So that's why I'm saying, take a small modification.
Well, if a modification that makes it compliant is possible, then that's, that's great.
Well, a pathway would too, anything that makes it.
Yeah, yeah, I don't have a specific preference, I want to, you know, be a good steward of the taxpayer, but I also want people to be able to use it. So.
My preference is to get this finished in the quickest way possible.
Okay. Well, he has a little punch in the sliding, so.
All right, that's good. Looking forward to his acknowledgement on, on that. Always good reading.
Yes.
We have our consent agenda on a new business. As we just discussed, there is the waterfront wellness package, one, payment application number one, we just discussed. There's also resolution number five twenty-one, which is an agreement resolution per the request of Broadhead Create Regional Authority. It's because we are a member township and they also have Pocono and Jackson, and the goal is to acquire the essentially defunct Pocono-Jackson Joint Water Authority, have additional capacity. It might now launch the other member municipalities have agreed to this, so the Smithfield sign off that they need. It requires no taxpayer funds, it is just a pro forma approval. So there's our consent agenda, do I hear a motion to approve it?
I make a motion to approve the consent, consent agenda.
Motion by Mr. Lovenheim, second by myself. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Originally, we were going to have a presentation from open amount in the United Way, but due to the weather and some scheduling changes at the United Way, that's going to be put off until our August meeting. So our next item to discuss is actually solar ordinance, and we have some input from Broadhead Watershed Association. I think it is attached. One of it's, Julia, do you want to go through that?
Sure, first I wanted to start with the original solar ordinance. You guys have not received an updated copy of what happened at the planning commission because I didn't want you to have two running drafts, one from the planning commission and one from BWA. So really quickly regarding the solar ordinance, there were very few changes that the planning commission recommended. Their main suggestion was that we relegate principal solar energy facilities to R1 district and not go with the overlay. And the second suggestion, there is a height restriction that says ground mounted AES which is on Miller, shall not exceed fifteen feet. They wanted to make sure that our pools or to be the carports were allowed and other things, so they suggested we change that to ASACF shall not exceed the limits in the underlying zoning district. So you don't have to worry about your carports. There's a portion in here that says any kind of impelling of agricultural props shall not go less than four inches, you took a look at that and said you can't import that, there's no way, so you take it out of the ordinance.
Okay.
And the last suggestion change was there's a part that says a noise management plan that addresses noise produced during construction shall be submitted. They wanted a little bit more clarification on that, you know, generally to be a full pledge plan or can it be a simple sentence on the solid plan that says construction will occur only between, you know, seven AM to PM.
Right.
Past that, all of the other suggestions were small ones, a couple spelling errors, a couple reference errors and whatnot. From there, if you turn to what Alex sent to us at three o'clock today. He took a look.
Four lines.
Yes, he took a look on the map and followed Eric Koopman's suggestion for doing the references and the map in front of you has red highlighted portions where there are site constraints that might make a parcel not really available, whether it's presence of repairing buffers and flood plains, wetlands, or slopes greater than twenty-five percent. The way I am reading this is suggestion would be if we, if we decided to go with Koopmans, these might be some of the issues, but there are parts that work.
Right, I mean, all the green ones, correct?
Not quite all of the green ones, you're looking for the ones that are shaded very lightly in blue hatching. But so it's kind of up to you. Alex commented on Eric's suggestion, the planning commission wanted to go with the M1 zone.
There's very few M1 parcels, it's almost exclusionary for a use like that.
We did take a look at it at the planning commission meeting, there are M1 parcels that over set, or excuse me, that intersect the line that Eric Koopmans heard over by eighty.
Right.
Alex did say that, you know, whatever we end up doing, if someone wants to come in with these, most of the parcels that would be large enough to handle zoning at this point are forested.
Yeah.
So they're all private, it's all private land, they'd have to make an arrangement who owns the land.
Correct, but it's just something to keep in. Correct, uh, but it's just something to keep in mind and, you know, basically I'm looking for direction for the board. Uh, do we wanna go with that one, do we wanna go with an overlay? Of the planning commission, like I said, suggested M one, uh, and not to put any pressure on you. Um, but this is the last time you guys have to look at this ordinance, because when you see it on February eighth at our meeting. You need to vote to send it to the planning commissions.
Sure.
Um, you can decide to think about this a little bit more, if you want, I'll make all of the other changes and then we'll make that decision. You know, on the eight, put it in and then send it off.
I mean, I, I had no choose, making a determination tonight, I mean. It's not necessarily an industrial use, but it's also not necessarily something that we want. On all conserved lands, but it's not possible, I mean, I would kind of prefer. I can go along with what BWA is recommended there. They're a good partner to us, a good steward locally. I do think that. It's highly unlikely these things will be developed anything for economic reasons, but. Um, we have to zone for them, so. I don't have an issue with that, Robert, do you have any?
Um, I'm not sure what you just said, what we, what was your final?
The, the BWA feedback seems, yeah, yeah, the BWA feedback. Uh, seems to make the most sense. Um. The reality is on, on a lot of these parcels with these steep slopes and the buffers anyway, they're not going to be permitted anyway for D E P reasons and.
Pretty much follow power lines. Where they, where these are.
Yeah, so I, I'm, I'm fine with the feedback here because it doesn't, it wouldn't match up anyway, so. BWA's feedback is, is pretty clear and, and then what the planning commission said made, made sense too.
Right, well, and I also think, um, you're probably right, it'd be restricted just to the. M one, we're kind of putting it out of business before it starts.
Yeah, correct.
Um, I'm, I agree with you.
Okay, uh, then on that note, that's all I need, I will make the changes and hopefully. I've got the final two by the end of this week, so you can review it one last time, also you send it to the board, or excuse me, the planning commission's next meeting.
That brings us to warehousing. We have, um. I believe a copy of our present ordinances and a proposed amendment. Ron, I believe you prepared. Both of these packets here for us.
I did. And that is the ordinance. Uh, I spoke with Supervisor Loebenheim, he said try to keep it simple, combined. Becomes difficult to do. Uh, but. Uh, I basically reviewed the various ordinances we have from different townships. And. Tried to. Mix them together so they made some kind of sense. Uh, and I also attached a copy of the. Present ordinance regarding truck terminals. Which is. Basically just being repeated. And as I have in my. Notes. Uh, basically, are there any other, are any of the definitions repetitive? Township needs to determine maximum square footage, maximum height and maximum impermeable cover. That is, this used to be only an M one, or is it gonna be in the E D Economic District two? I have it as requiring a five acre minimum, is that too large or too small? Uh, I have not permitted the storage of flammable explosive hazardous. Fireworks, ammunition or gunpowder. But, you know, is there somewhere that we want to make those? Uh, storage items available? And are the use restrictions too restrictive or uh? Not restrictive enough, as I indicated in my email, the. Plainfield Catcher ordinance has basically two sections, one for. Larger warehouses that have different use regulations than one for smaller warehouses. Which have different and less restrictive regulations. So I said, there could be some other concerns, but that's, you know, all I can think of at the moment, I attempted to. Uh, give at least five different definitions, warehouse, warehousing and distribution, wholesale establishment. Logistics Distribution Center and or Depot of, uh, Fulfillment Center. And then we have the truck terminal, so that gives us, uh, if these are adopted, six or seven different definitions. Uh, I have it being allowed in the M one zone only after a conditional use approval. And looking at the conditional use approval, I have there what things need to be. Dealt with and then I have use regulations. Who again show minimum lot area of five acres and. No slopes in excess of twenty-five percent or wetland, et cetera. And again, this is not. Language that I added is pretty much language from. Other ordinances except that the last page. The emergency access road, that was not in any of the ordinances that I looked at, and that's an important item, and I think it should be. Part of this ordinance. Uh, the spaces between buildings. Uh, and the height should not, you know, should be not less than the height of the building. Plus twenty-five feet so that you can get. Ladders, fire trucks, other kinds of uh equipment up, up the side of that building if necessary. And I also put in the mechanical sprayer clause, I'm not sure if that was in another ordinance, I think it was, but.
That makes a lot of sense.
In any event, that's, you know, that's the ordinance, and I wanted to get it done by mid-January because again. As our uh township manager will telling you, we have only until March twenty-third or something to get these. Ordinances adopted based upon our curative amendment resolution.
Right, well, I think you did a terrific job here, my, you know. So it seems like the things that we need to decide on in relatively short order. Are the, the number of square footage for the gross floor area. The height limits and.
Impermeable covering.
Yeah.
First time I've seen it, but, um. Uh, the only thing I, I agree with is warehousing and distribution facilities sounds a little like logistic distribution center.
Well, and that's what I put in my email back in. Last Saturday when I sent this out, you know, is anything repetitive or am I trying to? Skin the cat too, uh, too thin.
John, what, uh, on the Vagon warehouses, or whatever they call them, what are they actually, what is the use there? Is it just storage and then shipping from there or what?
That's my understanding, I. I, I wouldn't wanna be definitive on that.
I think most people see any large scale building with a flat top roof in the warehouse.
Well, they do, because that's. That was the lexicon used, uh, when they first started coming out, but there, there are difference, differences that Ron has. Seen in here, uh, I think. Uh. I think Vagon would come under the warehouse definition, I mean, I think it's storing the product.
Oh, cause they're going to have a lot of terminals, it's the key there, it's mostly. Internal distribution, correct?
For, yeah.
Um, and those are a hundred and. Um, thirty-four thousand square foot.
Well, they're bigger than that, they're three hundred, aren't they?
I, I thought it was three.
In total.
In total, and each building is like a hundred and thirty.
Maybe, okay, yeah, there were two phases.
Maybe that's a good benchmark for what the biggest of those kinds of buildings should be here, that are warehousing buildings. For, for distribution, the products that are in the building. You know, I, I, I left it open because I know that's an issue, not from Mount Fettle, where I'm solicitor, there are just absolutely.
Some of the people I live in, because there's a million square foot permitted. Hundred, uh, hundred foot height. Plus twenty-five feet or any. Uh, ceiling projections, you know, where you would put the air conditioning system, is there whatever, et cetera, and that is. Caused a lot of consternation, so I figured that you guys have to sort of figure out how you wanna do that.
Though, I've heard about Mount Fettle case, uh, they're actually for it as long as it's a Victorian design, literally.
Yeah, okay. We'll see, we'll get it, that's why at the next meeting. But in any event, that's what you guys need to decide and, and I don't know what the feeling is, you know, obviously these new. Warehouses that are just run by the. Machines that come up and down and go around and they're like, uh, the hostage, uh. Uh, forklifts, if you will, those need to be pretty high, I mean, if you're looking at six, six rows. And then, you know, some additional area in between, you're at eighty feet all day long.
How tall is this Vagon, is that?
I don't think it's super tall, do you remember where?
I'm trying to remember where they got a variance to go.
You know, what, fifty-five, fifty?
Yeah, fifty, fifty-five, I think that's what it is.
I mean.
And it had to be sprinkled.
Right, I'm trying to discern, and I think we should do that for most commercial uses to make it easier on the fire service, but, but anyhow. Trying to discern the fundamental differences, like I understand that warehouse here is really like Vagon, it's. Internal, it's not the main hub for shipping, you know, you may well have orders every once in a while, but it's not an everyday. Amazon or, or postal storage type of thing. But warehousing and distribution. I don't, that doesn't seem. Completely different than like the fulfillment center definition.
That's not my priority.
Um, and the wholesale establishment, I think that's the easiest to explain to people, right? Cause that's. Sounds like. I don't know, like a commercial BJ's type of. Facility. An establishment place, business primarily engaged in selling or distributing merchandise to retailers or to industrial, commercial, institutional. Rational business users or other wholesale, like it's, it sounds like. It is the most, it, it is the one that most people would interact with if any, like a. Like a restaurant depot sort of thing is what I'm reading. Wholesale for commercial. Uses, but logistics. Center. And the others, you know, that, that sounds like a truck terminal. And then, you know. That's not crazy different than the truck terminal definition we have here, so I, I don't know. Can any of these really be, you know, fit into the other boxes?
I, I, I see in your notes, you, you've crossed a warehousing and distribution facility, I agree with you, I think. We've got it covered in the other ones pretty well, but, but we've got a little while we can, we can know.
We've got, at least until our next meeting, until we really need to send it off, correct?
Yeah, I mean, again, we checked with the. Uh, Julie and C four okay, but now Robert, just our supervisor Loebenheim just made a good point about sprinkling. I don't have that in the uh performance data, that should be in there.
Yeah, that would, that would be terrific, because I know that's a concern.
It may be, but I think we should throw it in here just to be safe.
It's certainly a concern of the fire apparatus in, in our community.
Well, that was, that's the issue with Mount Fettle, they're saying you're permitting hundred foot high. Uh. Buildings with, again, another twenty-five feet or things on top and.
Right.
We don't have any fire truck that has a hundred foot ladder.
Right, and those.
We have to call it out in cases, you know, from some other place and it's gonna take a. Half hour to get here and blah, 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 uh, I, I think that's a legitimate concern, but. Uh. That, that is why a lot of people are upset with the height, that hundred foot height plus the roof projections.
Right.
To uh follow us on the earlier discussion, um. To stay within the timeframe that we have initiated under the MPC, we have to pass both the solar and the warehouse ordinances. On March twenty-second of twenty twenty-three.
Right, well, they all have to be in one ordinance, I mean, we're not adopting two separate.
We could do it separately, but then we'd have to advertise everything separately and it would be.
Do it at once.
It would, yeah, so the plan would be, you know, one ordinance that has, here's the warehouse section, here's the solar.
Okay.
That gives us two to seven weeks.
But, well, so that's my point, though, getting to my, uh, what I wanted to say, the MPC. And our planning commission needs thirty days to review this, which means absolute drop dead date to get this to them. Is February twenty-first, so if you gentlemen want to make any uh changes or anything like that, they have to be approved on the eighth. Because that's the last day that you'll have to approve that, you can say I approved this with these changes and then. Uh, whatever side it is, Ron and I have about a week to make any of the changes you want and submit to both planning commissions. And stay within the timeframes.
Fair enough.
Well, yeah, that, that makes a lot of sense, I mean, I think what we can be clear on tonight is. We're fine that it's uh solely the industrial zone and, and after conditional use, I know we mentioned it before. I think, you know, where Ron said truck terminal definition doesn't change, that makes sense, cause truck terminal is really fundamentally different. Than any of these uses, it's really. It's almost unrelated in, in a way.
It is, to repair.
I have a question uh on the use regulations. Where it says minimum lot area, five acres. I guess my first question is why are we? Putting an acreage limit, minimum on it, and my second question, assuming that we do. I'm not quite sure how to interpret this, it says. Five acres without any slopes in excess of twenty-five, twenty-five percent or any wetlands of any type or a flood zone located on the track. Uh. And then it said, and that we're partnering or disturbing, so you can't disturb the wetlands. Anyway.
I, I really don't think we need any of that, uh. Let's see.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering, I think, I think you gotta control, somebody might have a small warehouse and they might only need three acres.
Right.
You control that by maximum building coverage and maximum impermeable surface.
Right, so I, I'd be content with eliminating that as long as. We maybe perhaps address uh, in the conditional use, maybe I, I missed it or didn't see it yet, but in a conditional use proceeding, I think it makes sense to. Have heavier screening uh requirements when the parcel is adjacent to a residential zone.
Sure.
But other than that, I mean, I think that the rest makes sense and the, the building height. Isn't it? Fair to be? Forty-five feet? That's generally what our other uh height limits are. They had to get a variance, yeah. So I mean, wouldn't it be our best interest to, to make the burden stricter to?
Uh, if that would make your life easier, I've got our district, I just turned to the economic development page, but we've got maximums for building coverage at thirty-five percent. And maximums of building, of building height at forty feet.
Yeah, I mean, I.
But that's in your ED district.
Yeah, what about the M one?
What's in your industrial district?
Searching, uh, M one maximum building coverage is thirty-five percent and maximum building height is thirty-five feet.
Wow, even less.
Uh, it.
The height.
It, yeah, nevermind.
Well, I mean, I think that. In the schedule of this use regulations, when you would amend that, when we go for codification. Uh, would we not delineate these uses as permitted with a higher height limit per? This, you know, section of, of the ordinance, just to make it simpler, cause there, there are a couple things that. Have stricter uses than, than the underlying zone or, or more liberal than the underlying zone, right, so. That wouldn't be problematic to say that, you know. Thirty-five feet except for these uses, which. Are forty feet and then they could go for the additional, you know, they could go for a variance and then see the zoning here and going.
Might give it forty-five. It is industrial use after all, so.
Right, but I do.
Look, we, we approve apartments up to any forty-five levels.
Well, yeah, but there's a, there's a difference, I mean, I, I. You know. Giant concrete buildings versus buildings with windows and aesthetic standards and. Whatnot. Um, I don't know how to say with the, the, you know, no building shall be in excess of X, you know, number of square footage, you know, gross floor area. I think that if, if like Vagon is the standard. The total on that would be like three hundred thousand, but would, would it be exclusionary to have a cap like that?
I don't think so. If, if you're again looking at smaller type warehouses. Uh, the height and the square footage.
Remember, Vagon is two buildings, so.
Consistent with that.
We're, we should be talking about one building.
Well, the two, two phases, not necessarily two buildings.
I thought it was two separate buildings, what? There's a two phases.
I can't remember.
My understanding is that it, it is on the same foundation.
I think you're correct.
Phase, but once they have both constructed. They, they would eliminate that common wall.
That was that, the first amendment to the Slater Holdings agreement that. The township approved maybe two, three weeks ago, which breaks down the phase one of this is how many square feet and then. If we decide to proceed phase two, that this is the other square feet and blah, blah, blah.
Right.
So anyway, we'll. We'll take this up. On the eighth.
I think we made some progress, I think we made some progress.
Yeah, well, it's good to.
Yeah, well, it's good to discuss it.
Absolutely.
What's the adoption deadline again?
Uh, the, I believe the actual adoption deadline is the twenty-seventh of March, um, but our board only needs to report that on twenty-second.
Okay, well, they can't even start a meeting immediately.
Yes.
As long as we know what meeting date we're gonna put in the advertisement.
Right.
Alright, so right now I'm looking at this and I'm going to. Get rid of in the definition, the warehousing and distribution facility. Alright, and I, but at least let us study it a little. I need time to look at this.
I think, and I think we can all safely email some feedback so we can.
Okay.
Make some final, make a final decision at, at our, our next meeting, but.
Yeah, because this has not been reviewed, unlike the solar ordinance, it's not been reviewed by any planning commission yet.
Right. Okay, awesome, well, thank you. Uh, next is to discuss about the airstrip road declaration taking. Um, we discussed this, uh, briefly at our last meeting. Um, this is just a continuation, but more of on township side of the discussion and not, not bad of, uh. Interested parties, which are, are not present as far as I know. Tonight, Ron, do you wanna give us an overview of what we?
Well, as I said, I had a telephone. Conversation, the conference with attorneys Wolf, who represents the industrial. Uh, authority and basically is involved in the grants. And attorney Kanzinger, who is the attorney for the developer. And. Kanzinger was concerned that one of the grant expires in June of twenty twenty-three. Although Mr. Wolf stated that this deadline could be extended, as we know from some of the grants that we do. Her concern is that she needs a certificate of, uh. Occupancy in a timely manner to satisfy her tenant, she's concerned that, you know, she loses the tenant. Uh, and then, you know, that would be an issue, and she had thought that the. Condemnation proceeding would already be in the works. Uh, Mr. Wolf is, as you know, a little bit more. Methodical with respect to how he does things and. And I told both of them, look, this is your project, I don't want the township in the middle, I'll do whatever. We need to do, but I can't. Proceed with the condemnation action until number one, I know whether this. Railroad has been abandoned or not, because according to the research that was prepared, uh, in a memo that I reviewed. If the railroad was not abandoned, there's two steps, we have to file one law too. And an action for declaratory judgment for the court to declare. Hence the name declaratory judgment, that the railroad has been abandoned, and once that decision has been made, then we file the condemnation proceeding. Uh, and. The discussion at the phone conversation was, well, it may have been already abandoned, well, can't someone do some title work? I don't wanna do the title work, are you? It's your project, you guys do this, so.
Right.
Apparently there was gonna, it was agreed that there would be title work as to whether or not. The railroad right of that way was to be abandoned. Uh, I asked for revised agreements, which I have, I have not looked at them yet, but there's an agreement for. The cost reimbursement. From. The developer and or the industrial authority for whatever cost the township would incur, and I've reviewed that agreement and. Uh, it pretty much is in order what we've talked about, I've also. Looked at the, uh, cooperation agreement between, uh. Later Black Buffalo and, uh. With respect to this project, and although the township is not involved in that, that agreement seems to be in order. And then finally, I'm now told it's not just gonna be a water line that's gonna be installed, that they. Want to now install a gas line also. In this easement. And so now I have been given an easement agreement for multiple utilities. To be put in. New area, and again, I've received some changes on that. Hopefully we're okay, now I said, well, what are we gonna do, you know? And I said, I also, you know, we need survey or at least. Some idea of where the wetlands are, because we may not be able to, you know, put this line through wetlands.
Correct.
Uh, I was asked to, well, make a right to no request upon the sewer authority about this condemnation, if they have any records. I did not do it then because of this issue that I just got an email from. Our township manager that has been taken care of about the employee, et cetera, so I figured I wasn't gonna be. Trying to send right to no request to, uh, Ross Albert or whomever, if there was this issue going on with. Employees and who's who and who's working for who, but. I can do that because I, I don't know, I was told that the sewer authority. Proceeded with the condemnation many years ago. To do what this is being done, and then they decided it's too costly, whatever, we're just gonna stop. But I'd like to know if it was. If the condemnation was granted and they just didn't. Decide to use this area.
Right.
So. I will do the right to no request now, but I got the email from. Our township manager that that's not an issue anymore with respect to the employee and the authority, et cetera. And that's where we are, so I mean, I know Kanziger wants it done yesterday, but. I've prepared the agreements, I've read the agreements, I've done whatever, but. I can't do a condemnation proceeding. Without having the paperwork, I need to know who's gonna be the, obviously, we're the contender. Who are the common needs, what property are we condemning, because they have to all be served.
Right.
I need to know where it is by way of a meets and bounds description. And I need to also have a map under recent case law, if you're only, uh. Condening part of a person's property, you have to show the entire property in a map, that case just came down in. Uh, October of last year, and, uh, need to know what we're paying, we gotta pay someone for this stuff. Uh, so, uh, without that information, it becomes very difficult for me to proceed. With the condemnation action, although again, I understand that attorney Kanziger and. Her clients probably want this done yesterday, but.
Meanwhile, it's just holding up the construction of the road.
I don't know, I would.
Well, that, that's my understanding, because they originally intended to construct the utility lines under the road.
Right. Or do it the same time, so you're not opening up two holes or whatever at the same.
And we got to redo the road anyway.
Because they're, they're gonna need that road as soon as they finish the building. Or maybe they, they need it now, I don't know.
Again, I prepared.
Actually. But it shouldn't be given a C, C of O until the road is completed. I think that's where the agreement probably reads, or the notes on the final plan.
I, I've prepared a declaration of taking already, and we talked about this month ago. And it's set to go, all I need to put in the information and file it, and under Pennsylvania law. Once you file a declaration of taking, it becomes your property, here's the, you know. It's yours, on the deck, now, the other side can file preliminary objections, and there can be fights about it and. How you pay enough, et cetera, but once that declaration of taking is filed, it's your property.
Right.
So I mean, I, I need this information.
But it has to be after the abandonment has been, uh, approved.
Or verified.
Can we just file it and then? Uh, join the railroad? I suppose we can, but what railroad are we joining now? Is it North Falls Southern who has done most of it? Or, you know, has taken most of the railroad over, or are we, well, you know, doing somebody else? I mean, we could do that, we can, just give me the name, tell me who you wanna.
What, what's the easiest?
Well, sir.
What's the easiest to get this off?
Those answers, and that don't rest with us, the easiest is to hold tight until.
Well, the easiest is that if the title shows that it was actually abandoned. Or the. Uh, sewer authority determined that it was abandoned when they filed their suit and just never proceeded, that's the easiest.
Right.
Uh, and like they said, I just put in names, numbers and filed it to the courthouse, that's not hard, but. Again, wow, what, I need a meets and bounds, I need a map, I need to know. What the fair value is that we are gonna be paying for this stuff. And I don't believe the township should be in the middle of spending that time or money, because it's not our project. And then I look at something or I screw it up, and now, you know, everyone's pointing at me, no. You guys, your project, give to us what you want us to do and we'll do it.
That seems rational.
Okay. Fair enough, well.
Okay, so I'll keep you guys posted with this stuff and we'll go from there. But I will do that right, no request now to the. Sewer authorities, since I know now it's not an issue with respect to. That employee, uh, problem or issue, but.
Sounds fair. Robert, you wanna note anything for the board of supervisors report?
I don't know, but I do have some, and each should like to bring up, like. I don't know where we are, and I can do it here, our public comment.
Oh, I mean. You're supervisor, so do it as a supervisor.
I was reminded that, uh, we, I don't think we've ever, um, figured out what we wanna do as far as paving the bike park. I know we applied for a grant, um, to do a master plan of the whole bike park, but. Wouldn't we ever decide or did we about paving it, because. Um, looking at the next biking season coming up. Um, it really needs to be fixed, and of course, part of that is we've never. Figured out what we're gonna do as far as, um. As putting in the, the remedial drainage area, a system that. The conservation district has told us we must do.
We have spoken then.
Uh, it's funny that you bring that up, um, I actually, uh, I spoke with, um. David Lucy Canisch at MCCD, probably about three weeks ago, he was touching base with me, and I just had a meeting. Uh, with Missy about this on Friday, um, that now that all of the, uh, the document discovery is done, I have my time back, so I can start to focus on this. Um, long story short, the board needs to send a letter of acknowledgement to MCCD. Uh, I promised that they'd have it by the first, uh, Friday in February, um, at this point. When Missy picked up the project, after the bike park was constructed, there were deficiencies, we're aware that the rain gardens weren't constructed. Um, there are two, there's some things are too high, some things are too low, things are not draining properly. Um, at this point. Because we are, because we share the property with Middle Smithfield Township. Missy has been paused, um, because she said the township said we would reach out to Middle Smithfield Township. Um, and talk with them about pricing, and apparently that's just where someone dropped the ball, I have no idea who it was. Um, but at this point. What level engineering needs from us, and Middle Smithfield presumably because they'll fund about half of this. Is the okay to proceed with an as-built survey? Uh, which is what will give level engineering the information. And what they need to figure out how bad the problems that MCCD has observed actually are. Once we have that information and they have done the survey and create the as-built plan. Then we can move forward with how we remediate this, but at this point, we are stuck. Until we reach out to Middle Smithfield, get the okay to cross the share, and then move forward. It will be moving forward, uh, hopefully tomorrow, it's on my agenda list.
That's great, I, I seem to remember, and it's been so long. I can't say this is true, or maybe a dream, that I did call Middle Smithfield at one point, when we were talking about just paving it. I think the cost was maybe thirty thousand dollars, something like that, whether they'd share it, I think they said, yeah, sure.
Well, so part of the problem.
Before we got.
So, yeah, there's a drainage issue, uh, so step one, because we want to make sure, uh, this is a fantastic resource for our residents, we really have. No other bike parks nearby, um, so I wanna make sure that we do this right, on top of the fact that we've just received, you know. We have a fifty thousand dollar grant, and they need to go through that entire park and determine what our residents want there. Um, so it's my goal, talking with, uh, Missy on Friday, that as we repair this, we wanna do it right. We wanna make sure that, you know, ten years from now, the future supervisors are not shaking their fist in anger and going, why didn't you fix this? Um, so, step one, uh, I need to reach out to Middle Smithfield and talk about getting the as-built.
When we get to the step of actually doing it. I think, were, weren't we out there with, um. With the Dave King or somebody who was, wanted to pave it, and said they do the work as part of it, was that our meeting?
You and I were there, and it snowed that day.
Yeah, I can't remember that.
I think that's Dave was there.
So anyway, I mean, he, if it's simple enough, I guess the contractor could do it along with.
Simple, but it'll, it'll definitely have to be bitted at that point. The threshold for bidding now is, I think.
Just twenty-five.
Yeah.
Twenty-two, yeah, so it'll, we'll definitely have to go out and visit the project, but first. We need to know what the project is, so.
Not a problem.
You'll, you'll be hearing from me shortly.
Great, well, I don't have anything special to know, so we're gonna pay the bills. Um, the bills, uh, are ninety-eight thousand eight hundred fifty-four dollars and forty-five cents, they include healthcare, utilities, repairs. And legal and engineering fees. Uh, so nothing out of the ordinary. In this one, at this point. Do I hear a motion to pay the bills?
Motion to pay the bills.
Motion by Mr. Levinheim, second by myself. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any public comments, we have. People on Zoom and in person?
I just briefly procedural question, but I did wanna. Commend everyone here, uh, the meeting two weeks ago, standing room only. Lot of concerned citizens, easy to turn into a nightmare, you all. Handled it really well.
Thank you, thank you.
Excellent, excellent work, um. There's two supervisors tonight, so I'm puzzled, I know in boroughs, the mayor gets to break a tie. It's the only time he can vote. Who breaks the tie here?
Unfortunately, the motion would just die.
It's just tabled?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's not even tabled, it's, it, it dies.
That's it.
Not the real. It, it's done.
Oh, yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The, for my edification, how do you spell your last name?
Uh, B E G L E Y.
Thank you, sir.
Any other public comments?
I just have one for Julia, Julia, did you see the grants, uh, program that was released this morning?
Uh, I saw that I had a, an email from, I believe, PMVB about. Something, uh, I have spent all of today working on a, a case for the township, so I am. Going to be catching up on my emails.
I, I'm gonna forward it to you if you didn't have it, but if you have it, it looks like it's got. This small grant program, the stuff that you could use for like the bike park and stuff like that, so you might wanna take a look at that.
Definitely. Anybody else?
I, I assume you both, I don't know if you've read it yet, saw the exchanges back and forth between me and. And, um, Chris Barrett, for the idea of, of. Hopefully, they're putting some money into a, um. Bio-composting, uh, project that we could mount in the county. Um, yeah, mount it probably through, if he's starting it, through the auspices of, um. Of our composting. Uh, group with Lehman and. And the Middle Smithfield, Oak Grove. And the idea would be to. Try to build something towards getting, um, DEP money through the infrastructure. Um, what do you call it, the bike potter's infrastructure.
Yeah.
Where we could. Um, build a, a bio-waste composting. Facility in Monroe County and. Where involves, um. The visitors bureau is that. The, the best place probably to start and to be pushing ahead would be to get all the resorts. Involved because. They, um. Have a, and, an inordinate amount of, of bio-waste that could be contributed to making this a reality. I, I, you'll see all the emails.
Yeah.
I assume that nobody's had a chance to read them yet, but Chris Barrett, and he seems very enthusiastic.
Yeah, absolutely.
Maybe they'll come through with something.
And just to be clear, uh, for my own edification, because I haven't read those emails yet. Let me say bio-composting, you're talking about food waste compost.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We won't put it in your backyard.
No. Um, okay. Anything else before I entertain the motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn?
Motion by Mr. Levinheim, second by myself, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we have turned six fifty-two P M, wow, thank you, everybody.
All right, can I ask you a question, Julie? As always, I would.